Enjoying the snow.
I was just cross-country skiing down to JCC, so it was good.
Wow. Hopefully it's better out there than it was this morning.
Yeah, it was nice, yeah.
No, no like crunchy crust top.
That was still there, but.
That can be fun to ski on if it's fast.
Yeah.
Gives skate skiing a whole new name.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Hello there.
Hi, Joe.
Hey, Ellen, sorry, I was unmuted. Took me a minute to get the mouse over there.
Greg just emailed me that he needed the link, so here's Greg.
Thanks, Ellen. My computer seemed to have eaten the Zoom link.
Been there. I've been there.
Between working at home or working from my office, I never understand why the two systems are different.
They don't seem to want to talk to each other.
Well, when they try to explain to me why they have to be different, I have no idea what they're talking about. I just thought, yeah, but why? So.
There should be a way for them to coordinate better.
Well, they tell me they can't, so either that or they don't want to. I don't know.
Right.
Did you hear or did you or Jen hear from anybody who wasn't coming today?
I did not. I've not heard of anybody either.
Okay, I didn't either, but I was sort of disconnected until this morning. But are we early? No. And Paul and Regina, you there?
I'm here.
Oh, okay.
I'm here.
Okay, thank you. I don't see your beautiful faces.
Now you see me.
There's Regina, yeah. And then you went away.
I said, now you see me, now you don't.
Oh, okay, I didn't hear the now you don't. You sitting in a different spot, Ellen?
Uh, no. Does it look different?
Yeah, I thought you had the window behind you before.
Oh, that's at home.
Oh, okay.
I'm in the office.
Yeah, I'm at home, but.
Yeah, I could, well.
Well, we were working today, but we weren't allowed in our office, so don't ask me why.
All right. Gotta be ready for anything right now.
No, I just, I'm the one who keeps saying, well, why? And then, you know, they can never explain it to me, so I go, well.
When in doubt, you know, pandemic, because pandemic.
No, when in doubt, keep asking until they retire. I don't know who's gonna ask them why all the time after I leave. Well, what we got? For commission members?
Yes.
Were you seeing Mr. Lehman today, Ellen?
I did.
Well, where is he?
That's a really good question.
And we got some emails from John, but he didn't say anything about not coming.
Yeah.
And I haven't heard from Jeff Nelson.
Uh, meaning I haven't heard from anybody.
No. Where's Elliot? No offense to Elliot, that doesn't help. My cat is here, Oliver, but he's not a member. Did you want to join the commission? Let's see what I can do for you.
Just sent Jeff a note in case he's checking his email.
Jeff Lehman or Jeff Nelson?
Lehman. I can send Jeff Nelson an email too.
Okay. Excuse me. Well, we're a lively bunch. What's all your excuses?
I'm exhausted from, you know, yesterday's President's Day celebration. I'm sure everybody, you know, in your houses, you know, you guys go all out for President's Day. It's crazy here. Yep, so.
I take it you have very elaborate rituals for President's Day, Tom?
Well, is it odd to exchange gifts on a President's Day? President? You know, those kind of things. I don't, I don't know.
I didn't celebrate it for the last four years, but I won't go any further.
You can start celebrating it now, Greg. It's okay to celebrate it.
I was on a train yesterday, so I didn't, I didn't get to bed till 2:00 this morning.
Oh, yikes.
All right, then you're, you have a good excuse for.
It was rough driving down from Buffalo and then I had to shovel out my driveway.
We didn't get as much snow as they predicted, that's for sure.
No, but it was bad up in Buffalo and it was just enough that I couldn't get my car up the driveway, so. But it looks like Jeff and John are here, so, or at least Jeff Nelson, not Jeff Lehman.
Correct.
Good. Just to let you know, Andrew Johnson is here. He's one of my students. He's and he, he's done a government internship project with me, and so he's gonna probably come to planning commission meetings, BPU meetings, and from time to time do some research projects, so if you see Andrew, obviously he said hi, and he said hi, so he'll, he'll be with us at least through May, because then he's gotta get on with his life. So wanted to make sure you all knew that that wasn't just somebody who got lost, as popular as our meetings are, and my cat's trying to get up there, go down. Okay, so I'll call to order the meeting of the February Jamestown Planning Commission. I'm assuming you got a chance to look at the minutes of the last meeting. Could I get a motion to approve the minutes?
Don't move.
Thank you, Mike. Can I get a second?
Second.
Oh, thank you both. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. So we'll move on to the agenda. In talking this over with Ellen, I think it was last week, we were gonna do the, the small cell infrastructure order, and it's last only because that might take a little more time and have a little more complications with it, so if you're here because of that, we're not ignoring it. We're just gonna do it out of order. The other two, apparently, the Chatacoin Adventure Trail and the Riverwalk Community Skate Park, if I remember correctly, Ellen, are here right now just for information, not for us to take any action.
Correct, just to introduce those projects for some context and, yeah, information.
Okay, cool. So who's gonna be talking about the Chatacoin Adventure Trail?
Uh, well, I can talk a little bit about it. We also have Joel, Joe Rollman and Katie Finch from Audubon here, who have also been part of the steering committee for the cat trail, Chatacoin Adventure Trail, and I'll kind of jump off just in terms of kind of the the, the two, the two sentence or two-minute elevator, elevator speech for it. The cat project is a nature trail project connecting Love Elementary to Jackson Taylor Park, and between those two, between the terminus of those, of the trail, there's going to be a prescribed route that is marked by some wayfinding and some animal track prints that we intend to have a combination of painted onto the sidewalks, but also imprinted into new sidewalk sections put down. And then specifically in Jackson Taylor Park, the terminus there is going to employ a nature play area that Joe and Katie can kind of talk a little bit more about in terms of what those elements are. Well, really at either end, for that matter. So that's, that's the nutshell. Katie, do you want to jump in with some things that Audubon has been involved with, with this project as well?
Yeah, Katie, before you go ahead, for the record, can you state your full name and residential address, please?
Sure. My name is Katie Finch. My residential address is 15 Church Street, Sinclairville, New York. And I've been involved with this project. It's funded, it's a Kaboom grant, Play Anywhere grant, so the idea is to be playful with this in the city of Jamestown, but also add a nature element to it, and so we've picked out some, to highlight some animal tracks of animals that you might see in Jamestown, I think deer, possum, skunk, squirrel are some of the animals that we ended up with, and since it's hard to add play elements on sidewalks that are next to roads, we ended up with a play area in a grassy area in Chatacoin Park as our final kind of destination in Jackson Taylor Park, which will consist of a lot of natural features, some stumps, some logs, some loose parts to be able to manipulate and for kids to build with. So that is kind of the overall plan for the trail.
Thanks, Katie. Let me know, I can share my screen if people don't have their materials handy. This was something that Joe put together for us in terms of kind of illustrating a lot of the description of it, so give me a wave if you want me to share my screen if that's useful at all.
Yeah, I think that might be a good idea so that we're all looking at the same thing.
Yeah, absolutely. Let me bring that up. Come on there.
Katie, can I play on this too, or is it just for kids?
I think players are all ages.
Okay, good, because I'm looking forward in retirement to playing on it.
Oh, here we are.
So, so I guess maybe this is a little bit of additional background.
Can I ask you again for your full name and residential address, please? I'm sorry.
Sure, no, my apologies. I was all prepared to say that and I forgot. So my name's Joe Rollman. I'm a landscape architect with Leaf and Stone Landscape Architecture. My residential address is Dean Road, Stockton, New York. And as Ellen and Katie had mentioned, I've been helping along with this project. I guess it may be helpful as a little bit of background as far as how the project came about, and I, I don't know that I'm necessarily the right person to, to give that backstory. Katie, feel free to correct me if I get anything wrong here, but my understanding is that there's an initial group of organizations that got together and put an application in for this Kaboom grant, grant, which would be the funding source to implement this trail, and I believe that the original groups that had kind of coalesced forces, so to speak, included the Audubon, Roger Torey Peterson, Chicago County Health Network, and City of Jamestown. So my, I got involved in that project by way of just what I do as far as a profession with planning and site design, and through the discussions with, that have been had with the, the steering committee for this project, we were trying to come up with ways to make an interactive trail primarily aimed towards children, but really this is, anybody could use this and learn from it real, in, in actuality. So the, the trail itself consists of trail heads and, or trailhead signage on either end. The starting point's at Love School or Jackson Taylor Park, depending on which of the trail you're starting from. Both will be labeled as a trailhead with the general information about the park or about the, the adventure trail. And then the idea is, was, is to have, to, to bring in an educational component to the trail that would expose users of the trail to, and to different tracks of animals that are indigenous to our area, and then would provide some educational information about the, the animal habitat, what they eat, those sorts of things. Again, with the intention of connecting people to nature and, and providing a learning experience along the way. As Ellen said, initially, the, the plan is, or the thought is that you'll have these tracks that lead as a, or act as a wayfinding tool that leads you down the, the course of the trail. The tracks would be initially, in most areas, would be painted on the sidewalks, but as part of the project, we'd like to provide the city of Jamestown with a set of, sets of concrete stamps of these tracks so that as time goes by and as sections of sidewalk get replaced, they could ultimately be stamped with these tracks, which would be a lower, end up being lower maintenance down the road. And each section where you have a, a set of animal trails or tracks, there'd be a informational signage that correlates with that section in terms of like, here's the black bear and here's some information about it. At a couple of different points, there are some physical challenge signs, and the thing that I would note, I should maybe back up and say is, this is the general concept of what we're, what we'd like to do. I think any of the components, though, could be adjusted or you know, changed to better suit some other, you know, like the physical challenge things that are on there could certainly be something else, but that is what we, we've put on there at the moment. So I'm assuming you all got a, a set of the, the trail documents prior to the meeting. I'm, I'm happy to go through and bit by bit and explain it if it's useful, though I, I feel it's fairly self-explanatory. So I guess I'd say, rather than chewing up too much of your time, if there's questions or if there's a specific portion of the trail, specific part of the concept or anything like that, that you'd like to, to know more about or hear more about, I guess I'd take this as the, as an opportunity to field those questions.
Thanks, Joe. I have a couple of questions and then I'll ask if our commission members do.
Sure.
Has there been any discussion with the folks who live along 10th Street about this trail going down their street?
So.
Not yet.
Not yet, although with, in, with that being said, we have done, conducted, I believe it was three different community input sessions, outreach sessions, where we did try to notify residents of this general area about the project to try to solicit feedback. I will say they weren't overly well-attended, but there was that outreach component.
But you did reach out, so.
Yeah, yep. And as part of this, as we've been talking with the, the folks at the city, there is a, we do have a plan for reaching out and notifying the folks that are immediately along the trail to let them know of what our plan is and that sort of thing.
And did you reach out at all to the third ward, ward council member, Vicky James? Or anybody specifically?
I don't know for sure myself.
What were you saying? Oh, I'm sorry, is that Katie?
It is. Vicki has been at some of our planning meetings at the beginning of the process. The process was, has been stretched out quite a bit. We got the grant last year and then with COVID, we got a grant extension, and so it's been, in terms of her, her participation, she participated right at the very beginning and has been included in all the communication. So, yeah.
But it's been a protracted process because of the pandemic. It got interrupted.
Like everything else, but I appreciate the fact that you've done all that outreach. That's really important, so.
Yeah, we, we even did a session at Love School one with the after-school group with, with the, the kids, and then we tried to, we tried to get the parents to give input when they came to pick up the kids, but they all made a V line.
Maybe the kids were gonna hurry to get out.
Yeah, I could, I could have done that too, right? Long day.
And then when you get over to Washington and 10th, you, you cross to the other side of 10th?
Yeah, so we're making use, the, how it's, the map is outlaid, outlined right now, we're making use of the existing crosswalks. There's currently crossing that, crossing, crossing Washington at 10th is the safest spot in that there's a traffic light there.
Right.
And that, that current configuration is actually how the, where the crosswalk goes across on, on this, the state road there. That being said, I do know that our, our group, we've been communicating with Crystal, and we understand that there's a potential project going that, in the, hopefully.
There's a DOT project to, sorry to interrupt, Joe, there's a DOT project to redesign Washington Street, and so we're trying to coordinate with that in terms of addressing that intersection specifically.
Yeah, I mean.
To be in alignment with the project.
Right, if we're able to make it so you don't have to do a double crossing there, that would be best.
So when you say, so they could stay on the same side already instead of going over Washington and going across 10th, is that?
I, yeah, we're hope, hopefully, yeah.
Is there any possibility of upgrading that intersection because of the trail, anticipating that you might have more kids using it, or?
Well, I mean.
Washington Street is still kind of scary.
Yo, it sure is, absolutely. I would think that as the DOT project moves forward, this trail would, would likely help to leverage getting them to take a harder look at that intersection and make it a bit more pedestrian-friendly. If, if we can come to them and say, hey, look, there's that, there's an actual adventure trail that's coming through here, you know, you really need a, a road diet in this area sort of thing, I think that would help certainly make the case.
It, it is certainly our intention to prioritize that in terms of our interface with the DOT.
Okay, good, thank you. Anybody from the commission have questions for anyone on this project?
I'm gonna, just while people are maybe forming questions, I'm just gonna go through the pages of, of the materials, partly for Andrew's benefit, so he can see the whole thing, but we, so page one starts out with just kind of an overview of the route and the elements of the trail. And then this kind of, the second page kind of highlights the terminus at the school itself to feature a pollinator garden that's still being designed, and as both Katie and Joe alluded to, with the nature, the nature of nature is that it is somewhat fluid and unpredictable, and so these are, these plans are subject to change just in terms on what's available and what really kind of ends up working, working well when the, those decisions, the time for those decisions come. Just an example of the signage to go at the, the terminus at the school, and then this is the terminus at Jackson Taylor Park. Figure eight, kind of highlighting the idea of these creative crosswalks that I know Jeff is so excited by this possibility. We have not had extensive conversations about this, but again, just a, just an element of kind of things to consider in terms of making it as creative and artistic as possible. If you've seen some of the artistic crosswalks around the world, just, you know, do your Pinterest run. There's plenty to, plenty to see there, but the idea of hopscotch is pretty cool. And so again, just, just highlighting an example of some of the signage that would be complementary to existing signage in the park, and some of the examples of the animal tracks, whether they are painted or put into the concrete specifically, and some examples of signage. My conversation with Greg last week brought up the idea of signage that is, is more universal design, so for example, for people with vision impairments, and so we've had just a couple of conversations about either additional signage or, you know, designing, changing the designs of the signage a little bit, maybe having tactile things and braille implemented into the signage as well, so those are things that we're talking about at this point as well. And again, just to, just to pull out of that in terms of what they would look like individually, so I don't know if that prompts any questions from anyone.
Well, Ellen, I think the thing you and I talked about with some of these signs is the possibility of having some Spanish as well.
Oh, yes, in Spanish, yes, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Neighborhood, you're gonna have a lot of.
Yes, that's been part of our conversations.
Or bilingual or, or maybe just unilingual and their parents.
Yep, absolutely.
Yeah, that's, it was great input.
Yeah, yeah.
And that hopscotch, can't say it, the hot scotch crosswalk, that would only be at that one spot way at the end of that.
Well, right now it's not anywhere. This, this is a longer conversation with Jeff.
Yeah, I'm, right.
Well, the only reason I'm bringing it up is because the way it's set up right now, and I understand we're still in the early stages.
Yeah.
It's on that part of 10th Street where we really wouldn't have to worry so much about traffic. I would, I'm getting a little nervous about doing this on Washington Street because it would encourage the kids to play when we really.
Right, right, exactly.
Across that street, so.
Yeah, I don't want to put it someplace where they're gonna do a James Corden musical or something, no.
Right, yeah, no, right. We, we threw the idea there just because like, as you pointed out, it's at the, on the dead-end street. So you could, you could also do the same sort of thing on some, on a section of the. street. So you could, you could also do the same sort of thing on some, on a section of the sidewalk along the trail too. It wouldn't necessarily have to be at a cross.
But I guess this is Regina. I guess my question is, I don't even know how to form it. The trail, I mean, how did that originate as far as the course that you're taking as far as from Love School to Jackson, I mean, going down North Main Street, downtown street to Washington? How was that path established?
Katie, do you have any background as to the genesis of the route itself?
I do have some. We looked at a lot of options. And we looked at coming down, you know, a different, maybe is that Eighth Street there and going to Washington? We looked at coming down not 10th Street, but a different street and we arrived at this because of existing crosswalks and stop sign or stoplights.
Yeah, so my, my understanding, I believe, was that there's a after school, there's some after school programs and activities that occur at Love School. Where they're, prior to the pandemic anyways, there were. And they were making the the track from Love School down to the park anyways. I believe Michaela Cerdo, when she was with Chicago County Health Network, had redone some reaching out to find out what hat, what routes they were taking to get to the park. And this was one of the routes that they tended to travel. The other part, so we also looked at Ninth Street and Eleventh Street. But as Katie pointed out, there's no crosswalks there. So they're not, those aren't great streets to come down and then cross Washington. We also looked at coming down Eighth Street and then Washington because there is a crosswalk at the, at the intersection of Washington and Eighth. But when we, when we did a, when we did the walk ourselves, we realized that it wasn't that enjoyable of a walk because Eighth Street is a fairly busy street as well. And then it also puts you on a longer length of Washington Street, which we all know is quite busy and isn't, isn't the most enjoyable street to walk down. So in combination of trying to leverage the the locations of existing crosswalks, we are also trying to keep the leg of the trail where you're, you're on Washington, Washington Street or the busiest streets vehicular traffic wise to a minimum or as much of a minimum as we could.
So did you ever think about going down Eighth Street to Lafayette Street?
And I believe we did look at Lafayette.
Looked at that originally. That was the original request, I think, when they came in with it, Joe.
Okay.
As I recall, the placement cost on the concrete was pretty high on Lafayette Street. And going back, I think the biggest thing was your, the, how busy Eighth Street is. As far as walking the children down Eighth Street and crossing at Washington, it just, like you said, it wasn't as comfortable of a walk for people with little kids.
Yeah, yeah.
Regina, I'm sorry, Katie.
I think there was some discussion about wanting to be closer to the entrance of the park too and establishing that Jackson Taylor Park as like that, that place you enter, that Lafayette entrance. We were trying to be, I guess, closer to the pavilion and the parking lot rather than coming down Lafayette.
Do you have a follow up, Regina?
The signage, is it gonna be like, just kind of put in the terrace of these, of the yards or? How would the signage be? What's the placement of the signage?
Yeah, that's the intention.
Yeah, alternatively, the final location, I, we would leave it up to to Jeff and the DPW wherever they feel is the most appropriate. Conceptually, we figured that it would be in that tree lawn space between the curb and the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Where there's currently signage.
Well, as someone who grew up on 10th Street and then moved to Lafayette Street, I'm looking forward to the hopscotch game.
Regina, you, you and I are gonna do it together, but we won't step on the grass.
No grass, no grass.
No grass.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have a question for Joe or Katie or Ellen?
I have a question.
Sure.
So my question is like, who exactly, like what groups are gonna use it? Cause like, I interned at RTPI, the Project Wild America, and like, I know like the Audubon was using that route for the kids, but I want to know if like, the school itself, like the classes and stuff are gonna use it.
Yeah, my, my understanding is that there is a, as there's an after school program for some, for some of the kids at the school. And during the nicer weather, there's groups of kids that actually go down to the park. So like, that is one group that would definitely use it. I'm not sure, I personally don't know about the programming in the school during the day, if they are ever making trips down to the park or not. The other intention is for that, I mean, there's a large residential neighborhood in that general area. And in an effort to help encourage use of the park and make, make the park more accessible for the folks in that residential neighborhood. We're, we're hoping that this will help encourage kids and families to, to go and use the park and use that green space specifically in the neighborhood that's right there.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks for the question.
Anybody else have a question for Katie or Joe while they're here with us or Ellen? Ellen will be here with us. All right. Well, oh, I'm sorry. Was there a question?
Not really a question, but just a comment. This doing this kind of thing and program down there is something that I've listened to people kind of searching for and hoping it's gonna happen someday down there for many years. So when I saw the information as it came down in the planning for it, it would seem based on a lot of those comments over the years that you know, it's time has come and it's, it's good that it's being pursued.
Thank you, yeah.
Thanks, Jeff. That's, that's really validating.
Yeah, it looks like a fun project. I think it's great.
Thank you.
Anybody else with a question or comment?
Well, no.
Go ahead.
Say, I, I like the, the concept of, you know, kids learning as they're walking to the park without even realizing it. I think it's, it's great for, you know, just that aspect of it. I think it's a great idea. And hopscotch too. But just reading.
Another advantage is it's on the river. Based on seeing kids during baseball games and everything else, making a beeline for the woods along the river. I'm sure that a lot of, a lot of kids that are there will want to explore along the river. So a lot of other animals, other animals and things come because of that.
Sure.
Um, the only thing that I was just gonna add, I know that you said that attempts were made to engage with the residents of that area. Especially those residents that live on 10th Street where the bulk of the trail probably would be. You really need to make sure that you're reaching out to them. I mean, if you need to do a mailing, if you need to reach out to Vicky to see if she can, you know, attend the meetings or at least communicate the meetings, but I would definitely suggest strongly that you do at least try to get some feedback from the, from the community. Just, just to get them excited about it, not so much that you're looking for their approval, but somewhat are, but just to, just to make them part of the development, which will be coming through the neighborhood.
I totally, I wholeheartedly agree with you. And I do believe that the intention is to do, to do a mailing specifically for the folks around along that, that trail or along the route.
And that is next on our, our action list, Regina.
Yeah, and the other thing I would suggest, if you can keep the commission aware, so if we're available, we can go to the meetings and listen to people.
Yeah, sure.
That would be helpful. I think some of us could go or our council liaison, so.
Great.
Okay, great.
Anything else on this project?
Just a question. Has there been any discussions, especially with the Washington Street and the traffic and everything? Is there been, I guess, any thought about trying to do a footbridge over Washington Street?
As part of this project, no. Back could, that's certainly something, you know, that could become part of the DOT project perhaps, but it has not been an element for this, this initiative specifically.
Though early on, we, there was a bunch of us that did say that would be a very cool element before this.
Yeah, I was just kind of fishing to see if they'd come up in discussion at all.
I'd love to see it. Yeah.
Right.
I think it would be a good thing and that Washington Street is somewhat of a raceway.
Oh, it sure is. Yeah.
And even though the traffic sometimes isn't that heavy, it's really moving quickly.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and we're hoping that the DOT redesign will assuage that to whatever extent it can.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, anything else? If not, Joe, Katie, thank you.
Thanks for letting us present the project.
Thank you.
Looking forward to it.
Appreciate you guys being here.
A great idea and glad it's on the, on the books, if you will, or on the table right now.
Yeah, wherever it is.
Yeah, it's still a long time getting there, I'll tell you.
They go sometimes, right?
Good things take time, I guess.
They do. Things come when they're ready.
So let's move on to the Riverwalk Community Skate Park. And Ellen, are you gonna kick that off? Do we have anybody else to talk about it or?
Yeah, I can, I can share that and get you, again, just kind of filled in a little bit. I did invite representatives of the design firm that is working on the skate park to attend today. They are out in Seattle. So I didn't get a confirmation from them one way or the other, whether they were gonna be able to attend, but they were invited. The Riverwalk Community Skate Park is being designed by Grindline, but again, is located in Seattle. And I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen again. I'm pretty sure you have the materials there. Why do I have such a problem? Here we are. Finding the right window. Let me see. I'm gonna actually start with this one. I think I put in the concept itself first in your materials. So the original proposal in terms of the RFP was for a 10,000 square foot park. That was the, that's where it came, what it came down to with a budget of $500,000. And Grindline has eventually come back with the red and the blue as phase one for the 500,000 and the green would be something in the future that apparently was, is not part of the 10,000 square foot design. This was a little bit of a surprise to us and it was our understanding that it was 10,000 square feet, $500,000 budget. When we had our most recent meeting with the design team, it was, it was kind of revealed to us that they weren't intending to do 10,000 square feet or they said they, they couldn't do the 10,000. And then asking, you know, what was, what were, what were the barriers to the, the intended 10,000? They didn't really, you know, they offered things specific in terms of New York being a very expensive state to, to work and build in. They also mentioned some of the cost of materials. Some of the materials they mentioned that we are actually providing as the city, so they, they don't need to pay for them. So again, in terms of trying to kind of get a clear answer as to, you know, why, why the 10,000 couldn't be done, it's, it's not entirely clear. I mean, they gave their reasons, but so what we're looking at right now is 6,400 square feet for the 500,000 and then the 4,000 again is kind of a wishlist for what we, what we want from there. I'm just gonna go down on this document as well. So this is for the, excuse me, let me go back, sorry, because I've heard it might, so this is for the blue and the red. And so 426, the remaining 75 is their design fee. And so the construction is 425. And then they did work out a budget for the future 4,000 square feet at, you know, 284 and change there. And so what that translates into is this concept. So if you can see my cursor, I'm assuming here is the 6,400 and here is the 4,000 over on the future phase. And I'm happy to answer questions in terms of, in terms of the design, there's, there's very skate specific terminology that I'm not well averse to in terms of, you know, all these curves and things. They have very specific names in skate community. But some of the design elements were, were things that we wanted to, that are in the site presently that we wanted to incorporate into the, the design. And so this little island here is something they're really kind of designing around. It's already in the, the, the site of the park. And so things like that. And that's, I'll leave that as our point of departure for questions and other conversation about that.
Okay, and again, this is just for information. Ask for any action upon our part this afternoon. So who might like to ask a question or make a comment?
Yeah.
I have a couple.
Comments if you have one or unless we just, yeah, yeah.
Are there? Okay.
Was that you, Mike?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Well, when I looked up, you know, this, these designers, they, you know, they recently did one in Erie. And then there's, there was a couple other in Buffalo and Rochester that were done by different companies.
No, Rochester was done by Grindline.
Rochester? And then there was two in Buffalo that was a different company?
I, it must be the ones in Buffalo that are a different design firm.
Is there, can we get competitive like bids or from other companies?
Um, I, I, I can't speak to what the RFP process was. Jeff, I don't know if you have any background or insight to offer to that as I have come in just a little bit in the middle of that process once.
Out to bid over a year ago.
Yeah.
And all, basically more of an RFQ because we didn't have a design. Part of it was they, was a design build. So the company was gonna design it as part of the, as well as construct it. We met with the skateboard community. They were part of the, of the team that selected this, this contractor, Grindline. Essentially, everybody came in with a $500,000 concept, if you will. I mean, we didn't, we didn't have any, you know, preliminary design built in. We, we gave them what we thought or what we wanted. And, and we based it on, you know, their, their past projects and some of their the interaction we had with them based on their, their seminal package. I don't know if that answers your question.
Yeah, I was just, I mean, the price per square foot seemed, I mean, it, it's a, it's an expensive project.
It is an expensive project.
Could I ask a question? Did, was there a bid for the, this?
for the this entire project, including the future phase and and then they cut part of it off after we're, after we awarded the?
But it's, it wasn't, it wasn't a per square foot, uh, bid, Tom. Um, essentially, we told we wanted 10,000 square feet. We had $500,000 to work with. We want them to work out within the existing site, which was somewhat problematic. Um, I actually, when I went out to bid, it was, it was when COVID first started. So people were having problems getting onto the site. We sent out pictures and that kind of thing. I gotta be honest, it's, it's my first design bid with the city on a particularly problematic um, site that I don't really have a good, strong background on building skateboard parks. You know, but besides that, I feel very comfortable with it.
You feel comfortable on a skateboard?
Yeah.
I don't.
Um.
Well.
That's.
Yeah, no, my question was just regarding the bid and and did they bid this, you know, big, bigger project and then now they're saying, well, can't do it. And and I don't know if, as far as the space you have down there, do we have space for that future phase?
There is.
Oh, yeah.
There is space, okay.
That that's part of the footprint of the old industrial site. Um, and and as actually, even if we were to do the the first phase, we would wind up backfilling portions of the future phase with, uh, like a sacrificial, I don't wanna say sacrificial, but with with fill material. So we'd have to dig that out later because there's a significant amount of concrete structures, uh, in that future phase area. And, uh, as you know, the city crews want it cleaned out, it was all back though with brick from the demolition. We cleaned out last spring and, uh, but now we're gonna have to fill it back in with a better material, or you know, clean material, which we, we, that's not gonna be an issue. We have no shortage of material.
The local, um, ski clubs were, or skate clubs, sorry, were, uh, they're in support of this even?
Very much so.
Okay. Because there's, there is a business in town, right, that?
And they're on the, they're on the, uh, committee.
Oh, good.
Pete, Pete Shears.
Sarah.
Or Sarah was, uh, one of, is on the committee. And and we're letting them do a lot of the the handholding because like Ellen said, neither her or I have probably been on a skateboard. God, it's been, been months, hasn't it, Ellen?
It's been, it's been a couple months.
Uh, it is, it is a unique project. It's not a typical playground, you know, I mean, you, you really have to understand, you know, what they want, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, all the curves kind of look the same to me in the concept, but to hear the, the, the skating community talk about it, it's a, it's a slightly different language, you know.
Very much.
How unique each curve is that has a different name.
You know, the whole safety issue, you know, if it was me, there'd be guardrails around everything and and that's not what they want. And that's not the industry standard, so.
Speaking of of safety, there, is it accessible for emergency vehicles, ambulance and stuff?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Yes, the, the, the part of the plan that doesn't show here is along the bottom of the picture that's up on the screen. Uh, we, we are planning a 10-foot, uh, section of the Riverwalk. Um, and emergency vehicles would come into the left of the the picture, they're off off a fair amount. So, yeah, we could, no problem getting emergency access back into there. Again, this is kind of still at the conceptual stage, you know, it's not 100%, you know, we're still working with a contractor that.
You know, we're still working with them, but the, um, uh, at the same time, the, the schedule is, you know, the, the momentum is snowballing a little bit. The intention is to start construction, um, in April.
I, I have a question about, is this, you know, a liability for this city if someone gets hurt?
We, we went through this when we built the, uh, the park down in, or the smaller park down in, uh, uh, Jackson Taylor, or what's Jackson Taylor now? And, um, nationally, I think it it's become an accepted thing, which we've had our insurance company on board all along. Uh, knock out where we've never had a claim down at at Jackson Taylor. Um, the skateboard community, uh, it's almost a given, I guess, that you skate at your own risk. You know, we'll have signs up that say that kind of.
Certainly, yeah.
Mm-hmm, right, that's what I thought, yeah.
But they know it. I mean, you're on a skateboard, you're working within the skateboard park and you know, you're taking on a risk. I, I think that's.
Yeah. I mean, I'm sure any skateboarder knows that skateboarding in a park isn't any safer than skateboarding down Pine Street.
Right.
Just because it's a park.
Anybody else have a question or a comment?
One more, would there be signage about, you know, wearing helmets or in safety?
Oh, yeah.
Or, we have all those signs in place down at Jackson Taylor and I'm.
Yeah.
Being all.
Yeah, I've seen those, okay.
Doesn't mean everyone wears them, but we.
No, I know.
But we've done our due diligence to provide them.
Right.
And they'll have to wear a mask. For the rest of our lives. And anybody else?
Yeah, this summer, I actually started getting into skateboarding and, uh, well, yeah, it's dangerous. I fell a couple of times, but, uh, my brother is super into it and he was, he's like super pumped about this, so. And he said, most of his friends are too, so.
Is is super pumped the technical term for their?
I guess, I don't know.
We're some, we're super pumped too.
Well, my plan is, once all this is built, we're all gonna go as a group and do the nature trail and then we're all gonna go skateboarding, so. I'm gonna start practicing in my driveway once winter is over, if that ever ends.
I remember.
Also have a question or a comment?
Yeah, I remember practicing on a skateboard several years ago and I didn't make the progress that I needed to.
Well, you got time.
Yeah, they're dangerous.
You're right, but so is walking in my driveway, so.
But they're fun.
So is walking in my driveway. Any other questions or comments?
No, I'm.
All right, thank you. If not, uh, we'll move on to the, uh, five, was you gonna say something, Ellen, or was I hallucinating?
I just said, okay.
Oh, okay, uh, we're gonna move on to the 5G ordinance. Is anyone gonna speak to that before we, uh, ask for questions?
I guess. Yeah. I noticed when we got more active with this, it came back in the person who was up in Mayville, who wrote an article originally about the dangers of the 5G.
Right.
Had written another one, plus what we had listened to at the last meeting. I think the only disappointment that I have is with the concerns that have been expressed. It would be nice if we heard from some, some, what I wanna say, some practicing scientists or manufacturers, if any of it really holds water.
Well, I, one of the things I asked Andrew to do was, if you remember the last meeting, she presented us, I forget her name now, I apologize, uh, with some articles and Andrew was, um, I think still working on it. He's gonna, uh, read and summarize them and maybe do a short PowerPoint. Now, it's not ready today. Uh, and I did start talking to some people in the industry and, um, I, I'm not an expert on this issue either, um, but my understanding is that while there might be some danger, it's relatively slight. And also, my understanding, I think from all the different conversations we had, is that we as a municipality can't stop this because of safety concerns. If I've got my understanding of the New York law correct. And I, I think I see Chris and Elliot shaking their heads, yes, so maybe I actually learned something.
Yeah, and I heard that before and and I don't necessarily disagree with that, but the I don't know, it's like so many other things that we've experienced in history. You know, coal was okay for a long time, now we find out it, it kills people. Oil has been good, but now we've found that that destroys the environment. These kinds of things that they're doing with the 4G, 5G, and what they're gonna be doing down the road is only gonna make a lot of things better in the whole country or in the whole world. But if there are some things that are dangerous, it'd be nice if somebody would step forward. And I don't really expect that to come from manufacturers to it, because a lot of times the money issue is, keeps it more or less buttoned up. But I just tend to feel a little. I'm not gonna vote against any of this, but I feel a certain apprehension because I'm just not hearing things coming out of other quarters that I would like to.
Yeah, I, I guess, Jeff, what I would say is everything that we do has danger in it. It's a question of how much danger are we willing to tolerate? I mean, just thinking back to skateboarding. Um, so, um, I, you know, everything that we decide to do has some danger in it. I, I, from my research and talking with people, I think the danger with 5G is I, I wanna say minimal, but I'm not an expert in this field and maybe, you know, like Chris could speak to that better certainly than I could. Uh, and then Andrew's still gonna work on that. And at this point, I guess what we're asking, uh, if we're in agreement with the ordinance that's in front of us, we're recommending it to the city council and so then they still gotta go through their process. So if we should uncover substantial dangers, which I think is highly unlikely, you know, we still can put the input and even, uh, you know, Andrew's thing or his project could go to city council too, so. Um, I think we're, we're trying to take those concerns seriously. We're not dismissing them, um, but I, I think we, well, if we're comfortable, we need to proceed, but I'm not gonna presume that. So I, I don't know, Chris, did you wanna add anything to this?
Sure, I'll add a, I'll add a couple of things. Um, one, one, the FCC, um, you know, they, they regulate all of the spectrum of all electromagnetic radiation in the environment. This includes like your FM radio, your AM radio, 3G, 4G, 5G, 6G, whatever G you wanna talk about. They, they license the frequencies, they define exposure limits. Um, there's a whole bunch of, uh, theory and as well as testing that goes on to uh, vet this technology. It is a new technology, um, and the reason why we're even talking about it now is because uh, the conversations we've had in Verizon and and wanting to be open to the new technology for a bit, from a business development perspective. Uh, we've had a lot of issues in our community with access to high-speed internet and, uh, people not, not either getting overcharged by the local providers or, uh, not having access to it at all. And this is another opportunity to have high-speed broadband, uh, for our community members. The other thing that it, the other opportunity it presents itself to is, uh, increased revenue for the city uh, through poll attachments and as well as licensing the each individual location. Uh, so there is a benefit here and the main purpose of this ordinance is to define how they can come in and, um, be competitive. The other, because the other piece of it is, uh, the way some cities have done it is just having contracts with individual companies. The downside of that is it doesn't create a competitive landscape for multiple vendors to come in uh, and compete. Creating ordinance gives you that opportunity to have competition. And, uh, that's, I think that's probably one of the biggest reasons to have an ordinance is to create the competi, create an environment that is fair and even playing field for everyone and they know what the rules are. It also defines all the fees, so there's no surprises to anybody going down through the process. It defines a lot of the standards that protect the city's infrastructure in right of way so that we're not lo, we're not giving anything up in the process either. So, yeah, it's the background, I guess. And and we do have existing, so, so the, one of the main differences between small cell, they call them small cell, but it's basically a small cell tower. The cell towers that you see that they call them macro towers, the amount of energy that those put out compared to the smaller ones are very different. The larger ones, you have really long, uh, very high distance approach distances, you can't come close to the radio towers because of the intensity. The smaller ones, the reason why there's going to be so many of them is because they're much lower in intensity. They also have a different frequency that doesn't travel through barriers as well. So like your radio, you can get in your house pretty easily, even if you're sitting in the basement. When you get to the smaller waves, they don't, they don't go through hard material well, so like they'll reflect off glass, they won't go through trees. Uh, so you need antennas more frequently to to get to the end users. So that's, that's kind of the main difference. We already have some 4G small cell towers in Jamestown and maybe you've seen them, maybe you haven't, they're little boxes on poles, um, and those are used in areas where they need more bandwidth without wanting to put a big cell tower there because the current technology requires these big towers. The new technology doesn't. So.
Thanks, Chris.
And if I could, yeah, Chair Grab, uh, you know, one of the things that was brought up last time, uh, which I did look into a little bit, was the city possibly, possibly having liability issues when it comes to the new 5G technology, uh, with the state sponsorship of the technology, if there was uh, certain health conditions that are affected by 5G, that would be the liability of the carriers as well, as well as the state of New York.
Thank you. I like your window, by the way, Elliot.
Thank you, the old Jamestown architecture.
Yeah. Uh, well, let me open it up to, uh, questions from the commission for Ellen, Elliot, Chris, anybody who wants to weigh in on this?
After reading all that's been submitted, I really don't have any questions, only that concern that sometimes there doesn't seem to be enough information coming from the other side. But, um, I, I think it's a, you know, from what I read and the comments that have been made in the past, I, I have no reservations about going forward.
But Jeff, when you said the other side, I assume you meant the industry, not, you know, on another form of life that we don't know?
Yeah, you know, it goes back, you know, maybe a long time ago, but I can remember sometimes when we were building hot rods and stuff. People would have concerns about something and it would get discussed. And you would have it on kind of coming on both sides. Is it a good idea? Is it a bad idea? And how you get it done? And I just don't hear that, especially out in more public kinds of things anymore.
Yeah, but it, you know, in our meetings, we have the industry, we have those people who objected to it for safety concerns. Um, I think we've all spent a lot of time on it. Um, I think our commission has done a good job of not delaying this to delay it, but doing our due diligence to understand what we're, what's entailed here with my case going all the way back to, I remember a summer phone conversation with Chris back in July or August, so. Um, I think there's been a lot of questions, good questions asked, technical and otherwise, so.
Hmm.
And I appreciate your comments. I think my concern is that as long as we're comfortable, we think we did our job, then we can hand it over to the council, then they gotta do their job, so.
I, and I agree with that and I'm not trying to hold anything up and.
I know.
I was thinking about last last meeting and, uh, Mike had really gone through so much detail in there, the even was down to dotting the eyes properly, so. Um, I think it's, it's good and I read through it again or looked through it and read it and stuff and I, I don't have any reservations.
Okay.
It's just a disappointment as to what I think I see out in the general public on disseminating information nowadays as compared to what I felt used.
Well, I, you know what, it, it goes back even to the earlier projects. It's it's hard to keep up with all this stuff just at the local level. But, but that's good because that means Jamestown is, uh, busy trying to do a lot of good stuff, so, um, trying to keep up with that and then the state stuff and the COVID and the national stuff, I mean, it's, it's a full agenda, so, uh, you know. And unfortunately, at least, uh, up to so far, you know, that I think the Post Journal has done, I, I try to read the articles, um, has done a pretty good job of reporting on our discussions, so if people choose to stay informed, the stuff's there, but.
And there was, there was a lot of discussion in public media in 2019, I think it was in the August timeframe when the FCC order uh, originally came out. So if you, if you do a little digging in 2019, I think you'll find there was a lot that went on during that period. And now, I think the industry's just been kind of collecting their cash and getting ready to actually build it.
Sure. And I think it's exciting for Jamestown to be in the forefront of this, so.
Can I just just quick mention that I I think the the commission has done a pretty thorough job in looking into this and I and I've had a conversation with Chris and I feel good about um, you know, in regards to safety and I I feel good about moving forward and I I love the idea that it would create competition in this uh, in this field too, which I think we need. For consumers.
Well, given all the benefits we have now with the new electronics, another step forward is good. So it's only gonna get better.
I might a couple, just like questions or trying to make sure I'm understanding everything. The first is just on on page seventeen, there's a spelling error. And under paint that says rush peeling paint instead of rust. That's the second to the last paragraph.
Sorry.
The what?
The last paragraph?
A second to the last paragraph.
Okay, yeah, I see it.
I just assumed that was paint that was in a hurry to.
Mike, were you trained as a school teacher?
No, that's why I married one.
No, but he's he's reading this the way I read my students' assignments, which is a good thing.
Yeah.
Um, and then on page sixteen, uh, the last under pole diameter, uh, section B, um, it's just a little foggy. It says the the maximum pole diameter, including any equipment, is eighteen inches. And then the next sentence, it says the maximum allowed diameter um, necessary to entirely conceal equipment. I just didn't know what the difference was. It's just like a structural difference or?
Yeah, I guess the the wording in that probably could be improved. One, one is the the, some of the equipment is partially enclosed in the pole, so it's so it's like set back into the pole. The other option is it's entirely mounted completely within the shape of the pole. So like you might have like a round one with a box sticking out versus a full round one that has everything, it's round all the way.
And that's probably known in the industry.
Yeah, I think we could probably make that sound.
And my last thing was just trying to understand is just comparing on page sixteen, the height requirement section B um, to page eight, number two. And just reading both of them. I don't know, it just sound, they just don't read similar enough and I don't know if their intent is to be the same. Um, the one says the same block, the other one says anything adjacent. And it says a maximum of fifty feet. And then on page eight, it says um, fifty feet or more than ten percent, whichever is greater. So is the cap fifty? Or is it fifty plus ten percent?
I thought it was both.
Okay.
Um, and I'm I'm phrasing that as a question. Because that's included in um, B three on page sixteen, the ten percent, and I thought that's where that circled back to that, but correct me if I'm wrong, Chris.
I think you're right. I think I think that changed, the language changed because Verizon requested a different.
Yeah.
wording, so we can clean that up to make sure.
Yeah, I I remember that being a an exchange of something, yeah.
So it must have been mentioned in two places.
But those, otherwise, I mean, everything looked really good and those are the only um,
Okay.
Things that I was confused about.
Okay.
Yeah, you're right, you're right. There's a, that doesn't make sense. They're different.
Okay.
Okay, so if I heard uh, Mike's comments correctly, we would be cleaning up the language on page sixteen under seven design criteria, D pole diameter. And we would be making the language dealing with height comparing page sixteen with page eight to be consistent?
Yes, it would be clearer. The the consistency, the intended consistency would be clearer.
Okay, so there's two things that have to be cleaned up if I heard Mike's comments correctly. If we get to the point.
With each other.
Yeah, if we get to the point of recommending this for approval, it would be subject to those two changes.
Yes.
Okay, just wanna make sure that that's clear. Uh, anything else, Mike?
Nope, that was it.
Anybody else have a question or a comment? Are you trying to talk, John? Oh.
Can you hear me?
I can sorta hear you, but your volume's kinda low.
Sorry about that. Is that any better? Okay, sorry about that. I had a question about page twelve, where it talks about colocation. This is section six A, I believe. At the end of that first paragraph, it says colocation will be required unless, and then it lists A and B. I think the intent is to require both of those things in order to get an exemption to colocation. So we would wanna put probably the word and after A. Just so it's clear that they have to satisfy both of those requirements.
Uh, no, I think it's actually, I think it's an or, uh, because one is that they they can't because maybe the pole itself isn't physically capable of handling. And then whereas the second one is the owner may not be the city, the owner may be Windstream or somebody else. Um, and if, you know, we can't require them to do something with stuff infrastructure we own.
But we wanna make it clear that it's A or B?
We can put an or in there, yeah.
Yeah, cuz I think.
Yeah.
I think right now it's not that clear. Does that help, John?
Yeah, that's what I saw. Thank you.
Anybody else have a question or a comment? Um, are we ready to proceed? So I would ask for a motion to recommend the ordinance for uh, approval by the city council subject to the, um, if I remember correctly, three clarifications in three different spots that we just discussed on page eight, twelve and sixteen. Does that sound right?
Yeah, that's the title.
I'm sorry, what?
That's the typo on Rust.
Oh, yeah, right. Cuz we don't want, we want Rust, not Rush. Thank you. Can I get a motion to that effect? Moved by Mr. Nelson, can I get a second?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Lauren, any other discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you, and that now goes to the council, so it's uh, for Mr. Nelson and his colleagues to work with.
I'm looking forward to uh, moving this ahead. I think it's a great thing for the city, so.
Yeah, absolutely. I think it's exciting and I think uh, I wanna thank all the commission members for doing homework, so.
Yeah. Well, I appreciate all of the commission members' work too and uh, you know, like I said, it's it's gonna be a good thing for the city and um, it's uh, you know, um, like I said, it'll be a good thing.
Yeah, so uh, I'm sure the council may have more questions, but I think uh, I feel comfortable that we certainly did our job in handing it over uh, much better shape than when we started because of all the questions and comments, so thank you for uh, being so careful. And we'll eventually hear from Andrew too on his project about the safety, which he can still present to us and uh, Tom, he can uh, hand it over to the council too. All right, is there any other business to come before the commission this afternoon? If not, can I get a motion to adjourn? Moved by Mr. Nelson, go and get a second.
Second.
Uh, moved by Mr. Lauren, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. The meeting is adjourned. See you soon, I'm sure at something. Or on the, you know, at the skate park.
At the skate park, yeah.
Alright, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.